Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this hour on November 13, 2018. Begin our meeting tonight, as always, with a salute to the American flag. And I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor David Bowens in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, we'll note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert. I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowens?
Here.
Counselor Lippman?
Counselor Lippman is not with us tonight.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Here.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
I make it unanimous. We'll go with here tonight.
I'm going to have a heart attack.
It's five, what is that, six to nothing in favor of here. All right, so let the record show that we have a quorum present. There are five counselors present for tonight's meeting, and a quorum for this meeting has been established. We'll also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers. First order of business is acceptance of minutes. We last met on October 22. The minutes to that meeting were distributed by the clerk on the 23 of October. No corrections were suggested to her, and so unless there are any at this time, I'm going to declare that the minutes to our October 22, 2018 meeting are accepted as submitted by the clerk. Consent and action items, before we get to these, make two corrections here to the agenda, if we would, and that is that items 8B and 8C, which are both listed under consent and action items, are more properly, should be under new business, and so we'll take those up under new business tonight. So there's just the one, we'll take them up as the last two items of new business tonight. Please, somebody remind me if I forget, which I probably will. And, okay, so we still have one or one piece of business, and that is a change to the Holiday Parade temporary traffic order that is on page 14 of your packet, and I think you could see there that the highlighted versions are that they're changing the hours from three to six, and a request to ban parking from noon to six on Canal Street. So that would be the change to what we approved earlier. Any questions before we get to a motion? Counselor Hamel, you have a pained expression on your face.
It's not over the ti-- well, it's over the time, but that's not--
Okay. Motion to be in order, then, to approve temporary traffic order 2018-15 as revised, pending approval by the Special Events Review Committee for the 2018 Holiday Parade to be held on November 25, 2018, from noon to 6:00 PM. Counselor Bowens makes that motion. Counselor Cheney seconds it. Any discussion? Excuse me. All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. All right, and as I said, we're going to skip over those other two items and come back to them. Citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate place on tonight's agenda for anyone who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda, not on tonight's agenda. Yes, sir?
Can I just ask if the, if the motion to approve the use of the parking lot for 2019 Bike Week for the WIS Action Committee is on the agenda? I haven't seen the agenda.
That is on the agenda, yes. Okay, anyone want to offer comment on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I presume you're, you allow--
Could we have your name and where you live, please?
Joe Haas in Gilmington.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't know if you allow outsiders to come in and talk around.
We're a very friendly group here.
Okay, thank you, because I was in Dover once, and they took, had to take a vote, and I was in Alton once, and they had to take a vote, too. So I like your policy a lot better. I'm here today because, well, you generally go, what, three to five minutes or so?
I'm sorry?
On your policy. I don't want to take too long, I just want to try to get it summarized.
We generally allow five minutes.
Okay, I'll try to do it less than that.
Okay.
I was here last week or the week before, and I saw your town administrator, and I asked if the town clerk had shared her information that she had gotten from the Tax Collectors' Association, which met in September up in North Conway, and I think he said, no, she said no because she was sick, and I presume there was no other replacement that was sent up there. And what I'm getting at was there's an attorney by the name of Bernie Campbell, who's from Salem, and he teaches the tax collectors on the law, and that's the case law that is going, ongoing now. One of the cases, the Polanski case of Bedford, I won't go into all these details, but what I was getting at was, well, here's one question I'd like to ask first off, is have the tax bills been sent out yet?
No.
Well, that's good. And let me tell you why, is because RSA 76, no, colon 11, A, Roman numeral 1, 2, and 3, number one is you got a tax for the local education, number two is the required words that are to be put into there, so that if somebody is disagreeable with the bill, they can go for an abatement, and number three is an optional information statement that the body of the government, local, meaning the city here, or Board of Selectment in other towns, can put in extra information. And what I'd like to do is just fill you in on some of the stuff that I've found out about through the Tobin-Vilinsky information sessions, are you familiar with those?
I am not.
He and, this is Andrew Vilinsky of the Executive Council, he and John Tobin, who used to work for the New Hampshire Legal Aid Society, or whatever it's called, they've been going around the state to mostly the SAUs, the school districts, and they've been telling the people that what the state is doing now is wrong. It's so many dollars per thousand of the appraised value of your property, which the Supreme Court, in the case of the Londonderry case of 2006, if you go to the Internet version, it's on pages eight and nine of 19, it says when the adequacy amount has been determined, which it has, that there's supposed to be no more local property tax for education. So the average house in New Hampshire, $5,000, would come down three quarters, so it'd be like $1,250, which is more reasonable for $100 a month for just for the taxes, for the town and county slices of the tax pie. So I was at the Rochester event, this is at the Spalding High School, and one of the women candidates for Gilmington, she asked Vilinsky, well, what can we do to offset that? And he said, well, if you go up on the statewide property tax, which is now $2.20, $2.20 per thousand, if you go up between $10 and $12 per thousand, there'd be no local tax. It would be all paid for, well, it will be, it would be a local tax to a certain degree because it's taxed on the percentage of the value of your property, but you wouldn't have that high amount at the local level. And what I'm getting at is, this is for residential and business, so if everybody's going to get this three-quarter cut, then how do you offset it? You offset it by, don't go on up on the statewide property tax that much, but go up on the business tax, when they get a reduction, just go up on their business tax to offset it. And so I just thought that you all, as a group, could, if you wanted to, put that information that I've learned, that I've given to you through, you know, hearsay, I mean, it would be nice to have Andrew Vilinsky maybe here to discuss it to you, but it's kind of like the 11th hour, because the tax bills are going out, and you only meet twice a month. But it would be nice to have something in there, or else if it's too late, you know, just somehow, maybe in a future meeting, put in there that you would be open to hearing abatements based on illegality or unlawfulness. And the illegality part is where I come in with the information from Peter Laughlin, the attorney in Portsmouth, he wrote the book on municipal law, and he said that you can argue illegality in the abatement process, and I add, you can argue unlawfulness, too. And the unlawfulness is by Article 5, Part 2, where it says all taxes are supposed to be reasonable and proportional, which they're not. It's based on the, right now, it's based on the rich-town, poor-town stuff. So that's got to change, and I'm hoping to get some of these reps that were just elected to put that in there, an LSR to a House bill to do away with that word "local" in that RSA 76. And then, then there'd be a crisis because the curriculum amount, which is $15,300 per pupil on the average throughout the state, would have to be made up somewhere, but actually, it's RSA 19838 that the adequacy is being supplied, 3636.06, almost $4,000. And I asked the woman at the Study Committee, Chapter 190 of 2017 Study Committee on Education Funding, at the legislature, which went a whole year, I went to all the meetings except for one, and she said from the Department of Ed, well, we get that $4,000 roughly from lottery, liquor, tobacco, rooms and meals, and 5.9% from the feds. So it's there, and you read the, read the Londonderry case, once it's, once it's there, there's supposed to be no more local tax. So for the tax collector to send out these bills, is, I call it theft by extortion. It's official oppression is what it is. And to help out the people that are being pounced on by saying, well, you either pay your money, or we're going to tax deed your property, that's wrong. That's got to stop.
Okay, we'll, we'll check into that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, too.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter not on tonight's agenda? Okay, interviews tonight. We have an interview scheduled with Joan LaRue, seeking appointment as a full member of the Personnel Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of October 2021. Is Ms. LaRue here? Oh, okay, I'll put that one on hold. Nominations, appointments, and elections. We have two tonight, both with regard to the Wild Trail Maintenance Advisory Committee. And, let me get to the right page here. We have a request to appoint Crystal Larson, the Assistant Public Works Director, to the Wild Trail Maintenance Advisory Committee. She has agreed to serve on this committee. Term left vacant when Luke Powell retired. Motion to be in order to approve Crystal Larson to the Wild Trail Maintenance Advisory Committee for a three-year term expiring at the end of November 2021. Counselor Hamel makes that motion. Counselor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? All's in favor of appointing Ms. Larson, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a request to appoint Kevin Dunleavy to that same board. His term on that board will expire at the end of this month, so motion to be in order to reappoint Kevin Dunleavy to the Wild Trail Maintenance Advisory Committee to a three-year term expiring at the end of November 2021. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, affirmative, that motion carries. Okay, public hearing. We have a resolution for consideration tonight, that's page, on page 44 of your packet. And this is a public hearing on the designation of Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes pursuant to RSA 231,59A. Notice of this public hearing was made, was post, was printed in the October 24, 2018 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Community Center, and the Laconia Public Library. The purpose of the road declaration is to enable the city to repair and maintain a Class 6 or private road to keep it passable for emergency vehicles when it is in, it is in the welfare and public and safety, I'm sorry, let me try that again, to keep it passable by emergency vehicles when it is in the welfare and safety of public interest. There is, and we will be taking this item up on tonight under unfinished business, the actual resolution. So at this point in time, I will open the public hearing at 7:15 PM and ask if there's anyone with us tonight in the audience who wishes to address the council on the matter of declaring Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Paul Fitzgerald of Westgate Law, representing the Pendleton Beach Association, which in turn represents all of the property owners on each of these roads, with the exception of the state of New Hampshire, who, as you know, owns the pump house down there. We have been before you several times, we have submitted significant written documentation to you. We appear tonight, hopefully as a formality, simply to go on record that the association and all of its members are in favor of this resolution, and we ask your support. I'm not going to go further than that tonight because we have been through it in great detail before, in discussions with staff, discussions with your committee members, and with the council as a whole. You've been very generous with your time. I do have the leadership of the association here with me this evening in case there happen to be any final questions for either myself or the association, but where the, the purpose of the public hearing is to accept the, to understand the will of the folks directly affected and the general public, we wish to go on record as unanimously, the neighborhood unanimously supporting the resolution. We thank you again for your time and efforts on this particular issue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? No?
Public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, I don't know where I am. Maybe I should start speaking Italian here, what do you think? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council tonight on the matter of accepting Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes? If not, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 7:17 PM, and note for the record that we will take this up again tonight under unfinished business, the actual resolution. Okay, mayor's report. First, two, two things. First, I'd like to note for the record, for the council's sake and for the public's sake, that Christmas falls this year on Tuesday, is it? It's Tuesday, so the meeting, yes. So our meeting for the week of December 24 is going to be held on Thursday, November or December 27, at the usual hour, 7:00 PM. Everybody got that? So you will, will not be holding it on Christmas Eve or the day after Christmas, in case counselors have travel plans and whatnot. So on a one-week basis, that, our meeting that week will be held on Thursday, December 27, at 7:00 PM. Next thing I wanted to do is quickly brief you, if I could, counselors on, and the public on the, on the status of the Colonial Theater project. It's been some months since we have discussed that in public, and, and you will remember that we had some bad news delivered to us last May-June timeframe, when we were notified that the, the application for an allocation of so-called New Markets federal tax credits had not been approved and would not be approved for the current round, and that was a critical piece of the funding for the Laconia, for the Colonial Theater project. And so that kind of sent us back to the drawing board, and you will recall that the council asked unanimously for the Bellknap Economic Development Council, who is our partner on this project, to form a special task force made up of city council members and BEDC board members to address this issue and figure out what to do next, and to try to rescue the project. And I can report to you that, that tonight, that, that, that committee on which Counselor Hamel and I have been representing the city, has met, I don't know how many times, too many, well over a dozen, I would say, so far, under the, under the very capable leadership of city resident Gary Grollo, who is a BEDC board member, and a number of others that have volunteered a lot of hours of their time over the past few months. And I think we're, we're, we're very close to being able to come back to you with a, with a thorough, detailed report on where exactly the project stands and what action is going to be necessary in order for the project to go forward. The, the biggest obstacle we have made significant progress on, and that biggest obstacle was the New Market tax credits. And I'm happy to report that, that we have a, a commitment with a small C, I would caution, hesitate to use that word, but we have been notified in writing by the only community development entity that does New Market tax credits in northern New England, that when, if and when they get an allocation, a new allocation for tax credits, which they are confident they will get sometime in the February, March, April timeframe of next year, that, because no one knows for sure when the Treasury Department makes its announcements on who gets the allocations for this project, but they have, they have told us in writing, they, that if they get an allocation this year, that our application will be at the top of the stack, and will be the first one to be considered by them for that allocation, and they remain very enthusiastic about our project. And so that was, I think we have viewed that as very, very good news, and because certainly this project is in no way, shape, or form, in my opinion, financially feasible without those New Market tax credits. Without the federal tax credits in general, you're, you're talking, what, Counselor, $6, $7 million, and, and the project just is not feasible without that $6 or $7 million. So that's very good news. That is not, however, the only obstacle, and we have been meeting constantly and consistently trying to make the whole project work, but that's the biggest obstacle, and we still have a few to go. From a detailed standpoint, I think Counselor Hamel would back me up in saying that this is enormously complex.
To say the least.
And very difficult to follow, and there's a million moving parts on this thing, and trying to get them all lined up and everybody on the same page is not easy, but I think we're pretty close, and it is my hope that Counselor Hamel and I will be in a position to come back to council at our next meeting, if not the first meeting in December, with a, with a, with a complete and total report on exactly where we stand and what further action is going to be necessary on the city's part in order to make this happen. So again, I think we'll, we'll be, we'll be making that report to you either at our next meeting or at the very latest, the first meeting of December. It has, the one thing I can tell you at this point in time is that it has, it, getting from A to Z, appears that it's going to be necessary to change the scope of the project from what we had originally intended, but that change does not involve the theater itself. It has to do with other parts of the project, but not the actual auditorium and the amenities of the auditorium. And by making that change, we have, or considering that change, we have, we have increased significantly, I would say, our favorability rating with the community development entity that's going to be allocating the money, to the point where they're, they have, they have increased the amount that they would be willing to consider investing in the project if we made certain changes to the, to the scope of the project. So we're very seriously looking at that and probably will recommend that. So I'm sorry, I can't say more at this point in time because there's still a lot of moving parts that have to be agreed to, but I think we're very close from a time standpoint to getting that done, and look forward to being able to come back to you and give you a very detailed and very thorough report as best we understand it. Okay? Okay, committee business. Any committee business tonight? Where, I know we have Counselor Hamel, or Hamel, you have a meeting of your committee for the next--
Excellent, at 6:15.
Talk about the parking garage?
Whatever the TIP wants to talk about.
Remind us what that--
It is on the, on the parking garage.
Yeah, it was on the parking garage, yeah, that's what I thought, right, okay. And that, that meeting is scheduled for 6:15, I believe, at our next meeting, which is on the 26th.
Yep.
So anybody interested in the downtown parking garage issue, Counselor Hamel's committee will take that issue up on the 26th at 6:15 PM in this chamber. Liaison reports. Any liaison reports tonight? Counselor, we're going to have the, going to have a-- Next week, we have a meeting, right? Scheduled finally for the zoning task force, master plan task force, whatever we're calling it, that has-- That's right. --city rep, city council representation on it, and we're finally getting back to business on that, and the first meeting of that committee post-change to the master plan is, is happening next week. And I hope we make some good progress. Okay, now we are to citizens' requests to comment on current agenda items. So anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda, including the-- Indicott Park parking, is that what you were here for, sir?
Yes. I'm talking with the WIS Action Committee. The only thing I have here is that there was a request to represent WAC here tonight for this agenda item, and to bring some financials, so I'm not sure who, if I, who I should submit this to tonight.
We have a rather detailed report in our packet tonight--
Okay, maybe it was emailed by--
--as the financial information. Are you going to be here when we take the matter up?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
So we'll consider you a resource, if that's okay, and if there are any questions, we'll, we'll ask.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Joe Haas again. I just spotted this 20B on the private road permit. I just have some general information, I haven't looked at the file, but from experience, I've dealt with RSA 674, colon 41, Roman numeral 1E, where any road pre-existing, before the zoning got started in that municipality, each lot of record is a building lot, even if it's a non-conforming lot of under like three acres. And I say this because it was Senator Dick Green from Rochester who put that bill in that became statutory law in 2004. And the two parts I'd like to emphasize is Section 16, where it says that the zoning is to restrict and not prohibit. And also, too, in the Section E, it says that this is to replace any less restrictive municipal ordinance. So the, the thought is, well, if it's more restrictive, then that statute-- So the thought is, well, if it's more restrictive, then that statute doesn't apply, but that theory is wrong because we do not have home rule in New Hampshire, that if there is a statute or an ordinance that says that you are prohibited or more restricted, that it would be illegal or unlawful. I don't know the situations in this case, but I did put a LSR into a House bill to deal with this in the House Municipal and County Government Committee this past winter, and they didn't really get down to brass tacks. I was hoping that they would, but they didn't. So I don't know if I'm muddy in the waters or not, but I hope, I just want to put you on notice that I've been through this myself. I've been in court. And, you know, that's what I learned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Myers, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, we're not doing anything to restrict or make zoning more challenging. This is strictly that it's on a private road, and therefore the council is a governing body to.
The council has to approve it.
Issue the building permit. It's more or less a technical housekeeping matter. Staff has no recommendations against this. Sometimes staff could bring items forward such as, you know, coverage of a lot, runoff of water, condition of roads, that type of stuff. We have no concerns, and staff recommendation is you approve the building permit tonight as a matter of housekeeping.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? A matter that is on tonight's agenda. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of items after the Financial and Operational Trends Report, which is included in your packet. I will start off at the top of the first page of the report, page 27. We did have a couple of million-dollar uptick in building permits for the month of October, so that brings us up to just short of $13 million for the year. Again, the, through Department of Revenue Administration, the assessing year runs from April 1st to March 31st, so we've got a few more months, but typically the winter months, we'll see a slowdown in building permits pulled. The fire and rescue call data, sometimes just scanning these reports and comparing them year over year, are kind of interesting. You look back to 2017, where the month of October had 504 calls versus 415 this year on October, and as you roll down to the bottom of that 2017 column, you remember back that we had a significant snow event a couple of days before Halloween last year that caused over 50% of the city to be without power, and we delayed trick-or-treat for an evening and all that type of stuff. So fire and rescue actually received 70 dispatch calls on October 30th, a year ago time. So just thankful we didn't have snow this year, but we won't look ahead to what's happening on Friday of this week, though we'll just overlook that. Under public assistance data, our welfare office, we have been extremely busy through the fall, and there's not a, something we can point to as to why. It hasn't just picked up in the last few weeks when the weather's gotten cold. It has been very busy in welfare for several months now, so we're continuing to monitor that, but the call volume, walk-in traffic, people scheduling appointments for assistance has really just, you know, gone through the roof. They are busy every day that they are here and are doing the best they can for folks who are coming in and needing assistance. On the next page, the second page of the report, the property tax collection, we will be getting ready to send property tax bills out toward the end of this month. Again, I remind you that for the July warrant, we are already over 100% collected, but part of that is the several hundred thousand dollars we're holding from people who prepaid their taxes prior to last December 31st with the change in the federal income tax law. Motor vehicle registrations continue to come in strong, so you can see that even we budgeted for an additional $200,000 in revenue off of motor vehicle this year, so we're running just about $75,000 ahead of last year's pace, so we are a little ahead of projections coming in at 34% at this time. Page three of the report shows all of the overtime by the departments. Not a whole lot to report on on page four. I'm going to bring you to page five, the top part of the page. No real changes in any of the TIF balances or the expendable trust balances. What we will focus on a little bit is the EMS billing. So again, we're tracking that by months. One of the requests made at the meeting in October was that, for comparison, we add a column that shows the number of trips in 2017, so there's a comparison to 2018. So that column is in there. You could see, for the most part, we are within a very close range over the course of the two years. Again, the gross charge column is what we would bill if we were able to bill out 100% of our customary charges. The net charge is what we actually bill out based on different reimbursement schedules, mostly through Medicaid and Medicare. So for the most part, we're billing out in the mid-50% range of what the actuals would be if we knew that it was going to be, you know, 100% private paid, not subject to limitations. So in tracking, just focusing on July rate now, for the amount that we billed was $128,000, and so far, we've collected $66,000 of that, so we're running at about 52% collected for July. And again, not all of those bills went out on the 1st of July. Some of those transports happened the last of the month, so didn't go out until probably the first or second week in August. But you can see the progression, if you will, if you start the October payment amount collected so far, at 16%. We trend up to 37% collected for the September billables, 46 for the August, and 52. So I'm hopeful that by the time we roll through the rest of November and December, that's a solid five months or four and a half months anyway, and I would think that's going to be reflective of what our expectation is of collecting, and certainly then our collection agency would be going and sending reminders and notices and making telephone calls to bills that are unpaid at that time. So we are fully engaged. This is a company that's got a lot of experience in New Hampshire with other municipal fire departments, EMS departments, and it's a little bit of a learning curve for us, but it's not their first rodeo, so to speak. If you recall, on the budget book for the ambulance special revenue account, we'd also had put $15,000 in revenue for doing some in-house training under Chief Biati and Deputy Riley in the EMS area for refresher courses for both paramedics and advanced EMTs. Those were services that Deputy Riley actually provided on behalf of the hospital in the Ketchikan area for those regional paramedics and EMTs to come in and do the training. Now we've set it up where they are paying the city to come in and get the recertification here locally for them. So we did a paramedic refresher last month, and that generated $7,100 in revenue as a training course to get paramedics recertified or refresher coursed in the region. In January, we're holding an advanced EMT, again, refresher course, which we expect similar number of attendees. I don't know if the cost of attending that one is quite as much as the medic program that we did. But anyway, we are continuing to look to, you know, utilize staff time in many ways in order to keep the ambulance revenue and expenses on track with the budget. I'm a little sad to report, the last page of the report, we did have icy conditions on the final Saturday of October, so we did get out there a little bit with some salt to get the roads early that morning as there was a weather event. I was coming down from above the notch that morning, and it was interesting to see what was going on above the notch, but we didn't escape it unscathed. So I can stop there and take any questions on that report before. I've got a couple of other items for you, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions or comments? So just quickly understand, try and understand this ambulance EMS billing report. So if I'm reading this correctly, going back to our July billing, that's now 120 days, and we've collected just over half in 120 days. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you could say it's 90 days because some of the July trips wouldn't have been billed until August, and we cut this report off as of October 31st, so we're not counting this first 13 days in November. But we feel fairly solid on that because we know with the Medicaid and the Medicare, we build them at their rates. And that's why it was discounted from what could have been billed at $247,000 to only billing $128,000.
Do we have any advice as to what the normal turnaround time on getting paid from Medicare and Medicaid is?
Medicare actually has been relatively quickly. The Medicaid lags quite a bit, and the private insurance lags quite a bit. But Medicaid, all trends are, they're one of the quicker ones to turn it around. So it is something we're watching, but in talking to our counterparts down in Derry that have utilized this company and has success with them, there's nothing that's jumping out that's alarming them at this point to say, you know, we're not going to hit our benchmarks.
If you're going to get into this business, you've got to be willing to accept slow pay.
Exactly. And the company only gets paid if they collect, so they have an incentive to earn their 5.5% of what they collect. So that's their role in this as well.
Okay. Oops, sorry. Councilor Has.
Thank you. Scott, my question is, can you determine as a percentage, out of the $58,000 the balance due from July, how much of that is associated with Medicaid or private insurance or out-of-pocket payments that we're expecting?
I can get you that breakdown. I didn't get that detailed report for this month, but I would say between the two federal programs, we're billing out somewhere around 60 to 65% between Medicare and Medicaid, and the lion's share of that is Medicare, and Medicare is paying relatively quickly. So I would say of the remainder, if I had to, you know, throw a number out there, I'd say the overwhelming majority of what's still out there is private pay, either people with no insurance, could be a couple of workers' comp type of situations, and it would be Medicaid would be the ones that are a little slower to pay at this point.
Okay, and I guess the reason I ask is because I think it might be significantly less likely that we're going to get paid from the folks who owe the ambulance bill that were, I mean, that's just what I would think, whereas Medicaid is just, and private insurance is going to be a slow pay.
Correct.
Sort of a drip.
And I'd say at least 95% of our transports are folks who are covered by insurance, either private or through a federal program. We don't have a lot, I'd say it's no more than 5% have no insurance who we're relying on them to, you know, foot the whole bill.
Yeah.
Whether or not, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilor Barnes.
Yeah, what are we using for a benchmark in terms of what we can expect, what we're hoping for?
Can you use your mic, please?
Yeah, what are we using for a benchmark for what we collect? Do you know?
Yes, we based it on actual numbers of transports that occurred over the last couple of years, what the hospital billed out, what the hospital was successful in collecting, and in some cases, what the hospital chose not to go after, being in their minds insignificant dollars to put the effort into going to chase. We also did make some increases about last year at this time on mileage rate and on advanced life support and basic life support rates, which kicked in partway through the prior fiscal year that we're hoping to see the benefit of. And we don't, we're not bound by any particular contracts that a private health insurance company like an Anthem or a Harvard Pilgrim or a Cigna would have had with the hospital. So they could have negotiated a rate to say, you know, this is, you know, we'll pay in a timely manner, but this is what you're going to accept as usual and customary for the area. We don't have any of those relationships or those contracts in place. So we feel that the rates that are justified will be charged, the insurance and/or deductible from the patient, our expectation is those will be paid as well.
And you're confident within the next month or two that we can start saying comfortably we either hit the benchmark or we're short or something like that?
Yes, I would say once we get the December information, we budgeted for revenue a little over a million dollars. I think it was a million and $10,000 for revenue from ambulance transport, if my memory serves me correct. Yes, a million and $10,000, then we budgeted an additional $15,000 in revenue from in-house training programs that I just mentioned. So if you look at the $128,000 that we net charged for July, realistically, we need to be collecting $85,000 of that amount, or 66%. And the reason why 85,000 is the magic number is because 85,000 a month times 12 months gets us to the $1 million in revenue that we budgeted for. So we've collected 66,000 already, so no one is saying, oh, we need is another 20,000 and the rest we can forget about. But that makes the numbers work, is basically collecting about 2/3 of the net billables keep us on track. And expectation is we'll be collecting more than the 66%, but that's the minimum threshold that would make the numbers work to give us the trend. So if we can hit, based on an average net billing on a monthly basis of around $125,000 or $130,000, which has already been adjusted down from a much higher figure of $240,000, if we're successful collecting 66% of it, 2/3 of it, we're on targets to hit the $1 million in revenue that we used for the budget.
Councilor Hasmer.
I don't want to go too deep in the weeds on this, but looking at the gross charge, how do we set a gross charge for a trip in an ambulance?
It's based on a certain flat amount for basic life support, certain amount for advanced life support. That includes certain IVs, certain medications that may be used that make up those categories, and then there's a mileage charge involved in that as well. But the reimbursement rate that we get for that $1,000 ambulance bill from Medicare, for instance, might be in the $400 to $500 range. So we know that we're going to be billing out a private insurance company, let's say, or a worker's comp claim for the rates that they should be, where they'd get that bill for the $1,000. Whereas the federal programs have already said, this is what you're getting no matter what you bill us, and that's why the gross charges are so much higher than the net charges. I mean, you know, not quite to 50% less, but just about there. So that's why I feel confident that with any of the federal programs, we're already billing them at the amount they're telling us they're going to pay, and make, take them a little time for the payments to come in. But if 65 to 70%, or 65% of our transports are someone on a federal program, you know, we feel that since we're billing.
Well, the private insurance programs are going to pay what they're going to pay too.
Exactly.
Really, only 5% are going to pay if they pay the menu price.
Right. But the private insurance part of that may fall on the patient as well because they may have a deductible or EMS, so there may be a couple hundred dollars falls on the patient, and the private's going to pay the difference, but we may end up having to, you know, get a lion's share from a private insurance company and then, you know, going after the patient for the deductible amount, if you will, that the private insurance wasn't paying.
So we bill $1,200, excuse me.
Can we, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we know the exact cost of an ambulance run, though? Because I, you know, obviously, the gross charge is interesting to look at, but it's not really relevant until you know your exact hard cost of that run, and then trying to figure out, well, are we getting paid for less than what it costs us to run the ambulance on each run? Are we getting paid, is it break even? Is it a little bit more? I mean, ultimately, not that we're in, like a private company trying to make money on the ambulance runs, I just want to make sure that we're at least breaking even, if not having a little something left over.
We're trying to break even. We don't break out the man-hours for each transport and that type of stuff. It's based by a trip. Sometimes we might have an extra crew go to an assist in order to get someone ready for transport if the situation requires it. So I think what, you know, all communities are doing is looking at their base rates in order to have an ambulance in a community, you know, it's kind of like your electric company. You're going to pay a flat amount whether you turn a light on in your house for the month or not. Even if you didn't use any electricity, you're going to have a $30 or $40 base charge just for having that utility wired into your house and available for you. There's some base cost in order for us to stage ambulances in the community, and then there's costs above and beyond for the transports and for some of the medical supplies that are used, you know, in there and for staff time. So there's ranges, and that's where we base the basic life support with the usual and customary resources that are used for that type of transport, the advanced life support, and their ranges. So it comes in, rather than documenting everything and having a complete itemized list, the industry has gone to these ranges and billing it out based on the level of care that you've needed at that point.
But we don't attempt to say, I think, the answer, Councilor, please correct me. We don't sit there and say, okay, that particular call took so many miles, it took so much time based on X number of employees making so much money an hour, you know, the gasoline consumed, the amount of supplies used, amateurization of, on some arbitrary basis, of the ambulance itself or the, you know, the cost to run the ambulance amateurized or divided by how many trips a year it takes or something. I mean, it was, we don't do that.
No, but there is some general sense as to what a usual and customary trip would take. You know, communities do get paid for loaded transports. You know, communities do get paid for loaded transports on the mileage. In our case, you know, it's a very short trip for our patients if they're going to, to the lakes. If we're going to Concord or something, the mileage goes up. You know, some of the communities that are traveling further distances, you know, the mileage charges do add up more significantly because, you know, they're traveling further distances.
So the, the council raised the rate, was asked to and approved the rate increase last year, I believe, in two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah.
And when we went from, what, eight hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars, something like that in round numbers, I don't remember exactly, but it was ballpark like that. It was just like, well, how much more money do we need? So that's the percent we're going to increase the?
No, I, I don't think so. We did a survey. I don't think it's quite fair. We did a survey of what other.
What other people were charging.
But we also know that it was already capped on sixty-five percent of our business, so that wasn't going to be a huge money generator. It was keeping us, you know, on pace with cost increasing and those rates not having been increased for several years. But as I already said, a thousand-dollar trip under a federal program is going to pay five hundred dollars or less. So raising those rates doesn't do us good on sixty-five percent of our book of business.
So my question is, on that one-third, that's either private pay or private health insurance pay, if we bill twelve hundred dollars and their insurance company says, we'll pay eight hundred, do we accept eight hundred or do we go after the other four hundred from the, the patient?
We go after the patient for the remainder of the balance not paid. And I think that's some of the lower hanging fruit that the hospital wasn't necessarily going after. And the other thing is the hospital, when they were collecting on behalf of the city's transports, were charging us, I forget it right now, if it was six and a half or seven and a, seven percent, I think it was six and a half percent. The company we're using right now as a percentage of collections is only charging us five and a half percent. So again, a little bit of money, you know, savings there if they're a little more successful in the collection. You know, I think, I think when we look at this, this particular report in January, I'm very optimistic that we're going to be in that seventy percent ballpark for collections of July billables. But it's brand new to all of us to get into this level of the details and.
Well, and, and we may not do it this, Mr. Mayor, but I think losing track of our hard costs associated with this ambulance creates a level of confusion and a lot of us scratching our heads, trying to figure out like we did months ago, how do we go forward with our ambulance? So I, I'm, I'm not asking for it right now, but I think, I think transparency, or at least the ability to drill down through your fixed expenses, would give us some idea of really where we stand for long-term viability of operating the ambulance. It's something that, you know, I, I was a proponent of, but I think more information and more details would perhaps allow us to better appreciate the value of our ambulance service here. And also just give us a better idea of how we're controlling costs going forward, so.
I don't disagree. I think the, but I think the, the, the incredibly complicating factor here is that we're not just in the ambulance business, we're in the firefighting business, and the same people are doing both. And, you know, how do you calculate other than through some arbitrary formula, the, the cost to one part of that versus the other? I mean, if you truly say that two-thirds of our calls are medical calls, and therefore they should bear two-thirds of the expenses, then that makes the firefighting operation seem ridiculously ineffective from a cost standpoint. Right? I mean, I don't know, but.
True, but it, it's different because we're not, though we have to pay for the fire service, right, we're, we're not looking to get reimbursed on each call that the fire engine and the firefighters go out for, purely fire. I, I just think that sometimes these problems really are complex and the moment anyone throws up their hands and says, well, this is so complex, I don't think we could ever figure it out, I'm not convinced that we're spending money the way we should be and getting the return on that spend that we should get. That, that's my only, and I'm not saying that's going on now, but that's sort of in me, that's what triggers in me.
Well, follow up on that. We are tracking, you know, all the medical supplies before, if we use medical supplies off the ambulance, we, they were just replenished to that ambulance out of inventory at the hospital. Now they're city of Laconia.
Good.
So we're billing those out and we're tracking the medical supplies. We're tracking the fuel by vehicles, which we do on everything. We know that, you know, miscellaneous supplies, we've got equipment, we've got defibrillators that instead of purchasing, because they get, the technology changes every couple of years, we're going on a lease cycle with those. So any type of the durable medical equipment is all tied in to this budget down to the worker's comp, the P and L on that particular component of it. We have not assigned any share of overhead of the fire stations to this yet. But to the mayor's point, there's times when, you know, the folks who are scheduled to be on the ambulance that day are fighting fires and, and doing other fire-related beneficial work in the community that aren't on the ambulance.
And I think that's great that we, that we track that on a line item because, you know, the, the idea that if we can measure it, we can manage it better. That's all, so.
So we'll provide as much detail as you're looking for and we're all, you know, we're all learning with the numbers every month.
Thank you, Scott.
As a contemporary example of what I'm talking about here, or what I see, and I don't, I'm not saying it's an insurmountable problem, but a complicating factor. Go back to what I was talking about a few minutes ago about the Colonial Theater. At one point in this procedure, we asked a specific contract, the, the general contractor, a specific question, if we take X out of the project, how much will we save? And the answer we got was A. Okay, a number. And then we said, okay, so that part of the project is worth A, and they said, yes. And then, so then we got, we said, okay, so now let's do that. And let's fine tune that number exactly what it is. And the fine tune number B came in less than half of A. And the reason was is because their A number they gave us was just based on some generalization arbitrary. So much of the overhead were, you know, so much of the, of the, of the overhead we're attributing to this, but it's just an arbitrary number. You know, we have to have a certain amount of whatever it is and, and therefore we're going to assume, you can do it on a square footage basis, you can do it on a, you know, whatever basis, but it was, it was an estimate. And a lot of companies do that. You know, they say, okay, we've got a building with five departments in it. How much rent should each department pay? You know, what, what do you base that on? And, and that's what I'm getting at. It's, it's, there's a difference between that and saying, okay, if we eliminate departments B, how much money are we going to save? And then, then you're in another realm other than just trying to divide it up by the percentages, say, two-thirds medical, one-third fire or something like that. It's, it's, it's can be frustrating. Counselor Ballen.
I just want to sort of throw my hat in the ring in terms of the hard cost approach. I'm not, I, it's early to even start doing that, I think. But at some point, we, we don't have to be precise. But we really ought to know what the hard costs approximately are so that we'll have an idea of what it's costing the city or what the benefits of the city is. I, I'm just saying that, and I'm not looking for an answer tonight and probably not even after five or six months, but, you know, eight, eight months down the road, I, I'm, I'm want to be able to assess the actual cost benefit for the service that we're provided, and, and I think that that's appropriate. Just my two cents.
Seems like the absolute hard cost would be pretty easy to calculate. Even if they just did it on a spot basis now and then, you know, and say, okay, here's call A at five AM, how much did that cost us? Just in pure time, supplies, gas, whatever, just the absolute hard cost.
We, we can work that.
Counselor Hamel.
One quick question, Scott. On fire overtime for nineteen-year-to-date to eighteen-year-a-date, is that a correct figure? Do you think?
Let me double check that and get back to you. I see what you're looking at. Let me double check that.
I appreciate it, Scott.
Some of the changes in the finance department.
Repetitive number, which number you're questioning?
Nineteen-year-to-date to eighteen-year-a-date under the fire.
So what, what, the forty-four thousand dollar number, or?
Yeah, compared to the other one.
Is that the number you're looking at, or what?
Well, something jumps out at me.
I just think that's probably a typo or something, but I'm not sure.
I'm thinking one of the line items that I'm seeing there is the, the holiday pay, which should be identical to the year before because the holidays follow the same way, so let, let me double check with that, Counselor.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, you had some other things.
I do. I have three other items for you tonight. First of all, I want to recognize and thank the clerk and her staff and all of our poll workers for a very successful election day last week. I know Counselor Haynes was over there in his role as moderator, right, in Ward Four. And he also let me know the next day that standing there all day and kind of being a captive audience, he was hearing some things from his constituents about the ongoing construction on Court Street, so he took one for the team that day. But everybody did a great job and it was a very high turnout in excess of sixty percent for a midterm election, so again, thank you for everybody involved. We do have our cardboard, corrugated cardboard compactor up and running behind the garage on Messer Street where we had one of the remote recycling locations. The way it's working is we've got basically a cardboard enclosure cage where people can come and just flatten down their cardboard and slide it through the slot so that people can't throw TVs or trash or other things that shouldn't be in the cardboard cage, but they can drop them off anytime a day, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. What we're going to be doing is, once it gets full, a staff person will be using the compactor and bailing the cardboard. We feel it's a revenue break even, so for the cost of us bailing it and taking it to a, a re-user of the cardboard, we'll be break even outside of the cost for renting that compactor on a monthly basis, which is about five hundred dollars in rental. But every ton of corrugated that we can take out of the recycling stream right now is going to save us ninety-five dollars a ton. So for businesses, residences, we encourage people flatten your corrugated down. It's not dirty, it stacks neatly, you can drop it off anytime you're driving by, day or night. And it really will help us with some of our solid waste costs. We caution people, no greasy pizza boxes, no cereal boxes, it truly has to be corrugated cardboard, not the paperboard type of stuff, but that's operational and I drove through it the other day and we had at least a, half a cage full there, so I don't know if we've already emptied it once or not, but that was at least a good sign that it's out there and, and being used. And again, you know, folks can help us with some smart decisions in, in our solid waste and recycling cost. And the final piece I have for you tonight is, I was contacted a couple of weeks ago by representatives of Comcast who wanted to have a conversation about would the city be interested if they were looking to build out cable in the city in conjunction with the terms of our cable franchise. Currently, we have Atlantic Broadband. There's a misnomer, I think, that some people think that there can only be one cable company in a community. Just because you have a franchise agreement with someone doesn't preclude another cable company from coming in. It just means they have to abide by the same terms of the cable franchise agreement in terms of build out and service and, and what they're offering and stuff. So we had a good conversation about, you know, would there be interest? It's very unique in New Hampshire, I believe. Don't hold me a hundred percent, but I believe the only other community this has happened in that I'm aware of was in, just happened in Rochester, and it was Comcast who just extended into Rochester over the last year or so. Having lived in Dover for over twenty-five years, Dover was the stopping point from where Comcast ended and where MetroCast at the time, now Atlantic Broadband's territory, began. So it was a natural, you know, fit per se for Comcast to go into Rochester and do the build out, but they've been building out over the last twelve-plus months. And I think they've got somewhere around an eighteen-month projection in order to get the entire city built out as is required with the franchise agreement. Had a preliminary conversation, indicated that I thought it was a very positive thing if there was competition for cable within Laconia. They came back and they presented a draft agreement, which I just got about a week or ten days ago, and I've referred it on to Kate Miller with Donahue Tucker Chianella, their firm does the overwhelming lion's share of cable franchise type of work in the state. Kate was the attorney who worked with the whole ten or eleven communities here on our last cable franchise renewal. So she's got it. There is a process to go out. Comcast certainly wants to come up and, and introduce themselves and put a name and a face there. I looked at what Rochester had to do for the process, and I'm going to kind of paraphrase here, but basically you have to hold a public hearing and advertise that a, a new company is looking to come in and, and provide cable services according to your franchise agreement. So the first step is legal review to make sure what they've offered is in line with what our current arrangement is for, for our agreement with Atlantic Broadband. And then there has to be a public hearing so the folks can have residents, account, and offer, you know, testimony and input. And it's basically, I think it boils down to a couple of questions. Do you think they have the financial wherewithal as a company to come in here and meet the terms of the, of the franchise agreement, build out? And do they have the technical ability to come in and perform that type of work? So that would kind of be the process going forward. Still, the couple of items that everybody wants to get involved in is how much it's going to cost me and what channels am I going to get? And tied to federal law, those are two things that we have zero control over. And we need to talk to our federal representatives to get the franchise renewal on a, on a level playing field. In my conversations with Comcast, they also indicated they would be building out their telephone, internet, yes, telephone and internet along with the cable and being able to offer a whole variety of products to Laconia residents if they build here. None of that is under our control. The only thing that we've got the ability to control through the franchise agreement is cable. But my understanding is if they bring and going to wire the city, they would be wiring and have all those options available, so. I think that's very positive news that they're looking to come here. If things move along relatively quickly in a perfect world for them, they'd like to be starting somewhere right after the first of the year. So, once I get the draft copy back from legal counsel, we can certainly continue this conversation and talk about what the next steps in the process, you know, might be. But I guess I want to kind of ask right now, are there any concerns, objection as to what I've kind of laid out versus us moving ahead and, and encouraging this to proceed?
Counselor Hamel.
I don't have any objections. What city did you say they did? Rochester?
Rochester.
And how long ago has that been?
I think they started about a year or so ago doing the build out. And I believe they just hooked up their first customers in the last month or so, so there's not a requirement that they have to have the entire build out done before they can hook up customer number one. But one of the things we certainly want to look at is that they don't, I, I should back up. One of the things that you'd want to look at is not allowing someone to come in and just cherry pick the easy dense neighborhoods where they can get the biggest bang for their buck. That's not what they've done in Rochester. And from my brief read of the draft agreement, that's not what they're proposing here. They're proposing the entire build out within a reasonable period of time.
So Rochester's the only other one that has both?
To my knowledge, yes. And, and that just happened in the past year.
Can we have some discussion with the manager over there, or have you already?
I've reached out to him a little bit already and I will continue the dialogue, but, you know, basically it comes down to they've got to live by the agreement, so it's not like you can do a, a, an easier agreement, a less stringent agreement with a second carrier. The, the franchise agreement that we have is basically what they need to live by.
They, they've been in New Hampshire a while, different places, I believe. Are they up in Conway?
Comcast?
Concord.
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 They're all over the seacoast.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, you know, we have some small pockets here. I mean, here we've got Atlantic Broadband just over in Holderness or Center Harbor area. They've got Time Warner, I believe, and, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of pockets around here, but Comcast has certainly been in New Hampshire for a good, a good twenty-five years, I want to say.
Thank you.
Anybody have any concerns?
Go for it. I don't have concerns about that. I, I did want to ask a question about the election. How did we, can I ask how we did for poll workers? Were we stocked up where we were supposed to be, or?
We were.
We were, okay.
Ward Five did a very good job. They were fully manned.
Well, Ward One did well, but those people are there a long time. I'm kidding.
I, I toured all the wards, as I really did, and
Good job.
Three times. And everybody was And everybody was fully staffed and right on it, even though it was a significant turnout.
It's not as bad as the primary, though, is it? Where you got to account for all the undeclareds.
No, it's much easier with one ballot.
Yeah.
Was it sixty percent or over?
Almost.
Any other questions or comments for the manager?
Yes, I do.
You're up.
Scott, is the staff still working on criteria for accepting as-is roads?
We're open to whatever input you might have on things, yes, so.
Okay. No, I've had, just had a couple of inquiries, and that's why I want, because I thought the last, it was left that there was going to be a criteria developed.
We are, yes. So, we're welcome to that input, yes.
And the second thing, overnight parking, there's still some pockets of people parking on the sidewalks at night. And you can tell at six-thirty in the morning, there's frost on the windshields. They haven't been there, they didn't arrive at six o'clock.
I will have that conversation with Chief Kenfield.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Counselor, it was fifty-six percent.
Okay, thank you.
Say it again?
Fifty-six.
Okay. All right, let's get on to new business then. We have a number of items, I think this can go relatively quickly. First up, page thirty-three of your packet is a request from the Downtown Gym/Real Life Santas to hold a fundraising event on the WOW Trail. And if I read this correctly, what they want to do on November twenty-fourth is have a five-k race walk in which they anticipate raising over two thousand dollars on the WOW Trail. That's why this is coming to the City Council for approval, is the two thousand dollar number under new business. No direct cost from the city. I'm assuming this will not tie up the WOW Trail in terms of anybody else being able to use it. Maybe we'll just use it along with everyone else. Any questions before we vote on this? You've got it in your packet. All right, a motion would be in order to approve the request by the Downtown Gym/Real Life Santas to hold a fundraising event on the WOW Trail from Fair Street to the Belmont Town Line on November twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen, and for the city to waive all fees associated with the event. Counselor Hamill makes the motion, Counselor Hosmer seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. All right, next up is the aforementioned request for a building permit on private road for number seventy-eight Harglin Lane, up in the Weers Beach area. That request is detailed on page thirty-five of your packet and notes that this is a road that accesses the area around Pickrell Cove. Any discussion before we approve this? This has to be approved by the council because it is a private road. All right, a motion would be in order to approve the building permit for seventy-eight Harglin Lane as requested, contingent upon receiving all permits requested by the city. Counselor Cheney makes that motion. Counselor Bowden seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. I have five. Counselor Cheney, are you voting?
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, I apologize profusely.
Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously also.
Apology not accepted.
Next up is a request, I got three airport items, the next three here. First up is a request for authorization for the mayor to sign four documents in relation to the refinancing of DA Enterprise Corporation's hangar. This has to do with DA Enterprises as Emerson Aviation, and they built a new hangar earlier in the year, and they are refinancing the mortgage on that hangar. And so, there's some paperwork that has to be done because we own the land under the hangar. So, we have to sign off some paperwork for the bank, and that's what that's about. The Airport Authority also has to approve that and has already done so. We did that at our meeting on October twenty-third. So, a motion would be in order to authorize Mayor Edward Engler to sign the following documents referenced above in relations to the refinancing of DA Enterprise's corporate corporations' hangar, subordination, non-disturbance and atonement agreement, landlords' waiver and consent, that's the city, landlords' estoppel certificate and collateral assignment of leaseholder rights.
Have you read that?
That was a bunch, huh? Counselor Hosmer makes that motion, is there a second, please? Counselor Hamill seconds the motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries. All right, standing on the airport, both twenty-D and twenty-E are related, and that is that, and this is not unusual at the airport because the leases we sign, the land leases are typically for forty years. So, it's not unusual for a hangar to change hands during that forty-year period. And so, basically, what we're doing here with item D and item E is canceling the lease agreement with Thomas Hettiken for a hangar, and he is selling that hangar to Scott and Virginia Johnson, and we're simply transferring the leaseholder on the land from one party to the other. It's basically what we're doing here on these two motions. They've already been approved on October twenty-third by the Airport Authority Board. So, the first motion is to authorize Mayor Edward Engler to sign documents authorizing the termination of the lease between the City of Laconia, Laconia Airport Authority and Thomas Hettiken. By Counselor Hosmer, second by Counselor Bowden, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries unanimously. All right, and finally, on the airport front, a move to authorize Mayor Edward Engler to sign the lease agreement between the City of Laconia, Laconia Airport Authority and Scott and Virginia Johnson on the same hangar. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion, Counselor Bowden, or Counselor Hamill seconds it, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries as well. Thank you on behalf of the Airport Authority. Okay, Provincal Road. We have a request. This is on page thirty-nine, or starts on page thirty-nine of your packet. We have a request to declare Provincal Road in the south end, this is just outside the bypass off of Academy Street, to ban parking on that roadway. And is Mr. Anderson here tonight? Yes, he is. Could you brief us on this, please?
We're basically talking about the far end of provincial road, it's that last property. If anyone's been down it, basically, it's a dead-end road that goes immediately into the apartment complex. And the cars are parking in such an area, you can't get around the turn in the apartment complex to come back up with a large truck. So, we're trying to make sure it's open at all times for plow trucks. And additionally, one of the neighbors has complained that during times, people are parking too close to his driveway and he can't come out.
Is that from the apartments?
From the apartment complex.
So, is their parking lot not big enough?
When I go down there, most of the time, there are plenty of spaces left in the parking lot. I think mainly it's close because it's, you can go from that location straight into their side entrance into the building.
I'm not sure I understood what you're saying, yeah.
When you park on the street, you're basically just across a short distance yard to the side entrance into one of the apartment complexes.
Oh, it's closer.
It's closer.
Is that just a wooded area most of the way, or?
No, it's open all the way down. You have houses going towards the apartment complex on the right. You've got a very small, narrow wooded area, then you have the apartment complexes.
So, one of those buildings is a dormitory?
Correct, it's the far one. The, it's the close one is the one that's generating the problems.
I'm sorry?
It's the one closest to provincial. That's not the dormitory, it's the regular apartment building. The far one, that's as far away from the road as you can get, is the one that's the dormitory.
And this request was made by the neighbor?
It was made by both public works and the property owner at the end of the last house, at the end of Provinco Road.
So, this will help, this will help during the daytime hours, because if people are parking there, there's no, there's no, no parking now, and it's not the overnight parking restriction. And a lot of times, the trucks need to get down through there during daytime hours to manage storms, too. So, this is, it's not so much the overnight hours where we've got the parking ban in effect. This is more to help us out during the daytime hours and cut off that bottleneck.
Counselor Haynes, you have, want to weigh in on this?
I've looked at it, yeah, I agree. But I think the problem is citywide. I think we've got people that, it used to be citizens had one car. Now, there's two, three, four, five cars per house, and they're, they're parked everywhere.
But this apartment complex is new and has the spaces available for them, they're just not as close, and that's the problem. So, I think this will help alleviate that.
I agree.
All right, questions or comments before we get to making a motion here? All right. Motion would be in order to have the City Council approve designating the odd-numbered side of the road from the southern property line of forty-seven Provinco Road to the north end of the city's road as a no-parking area, and the even-numbered side of the road from the southern property line of forty-seven Provinco Road to the north end of the city's road as a no-parking area. Counselor Haynes, you care to make that motion? He does, is there a second? Counselor Cheney seconds that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're on to the always-popular Second Half Sewer Warrant. Who would like to move to approve the two thousand and eighteen Second Half Sewer Warrant? This is a real honor. Counselor Bowden, you have the honor, all right. Is there anyone dare second this? Counselor Cheney seconds it, he's a brave man. All right, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the two thousand and eighteen Second Half Sewer Warrant, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Now, I believe this has already been signed, correct? So, what are we, we're missing two signatures. So, does that go back to the custody of the clerk?
I'll take it, yeah.
Okay.
The prettiest stamps.
Okay, now, we're going to switch back to the two items that were currently, were previously on the consent and action calendar that have been moved. The first one is for the Weers Action Committee. And again, this comes to the council because there's more than two thousand dollars involved, and they are asking once again to be able to use Endicott Rock Park as a fundraising event during Motorcycle Week next year, where they charge for parking and keep the proceeds. And they have provided us with their financial statements, which we began asking for last year. And I believe this shows that their gross income last year, this year, for Motorcycle Week was a little over thirty-one thousand dollars. They spent eighty-seven hundred dollars on labor, another five hundred dollars on miscellaneous expenses, and they netted twenty-two thousand dollars for the organization for running that parking lot and keeping all the proceeds. That's what this is about. Any questions or comments? Counselor Cheney?
No, I'll move the.
Okay, Counselor Cheney moves to approve the request by the Weers Action Committee to hold a parking fundraising event at Endicott Rock Park in conjunction with two thousand and nineteen Motorcycle Week event, beginning June eighth, two thousand and nineteen, and ending June sixteen, two thousand and nineteen. Counselor Hosmer seconds that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Related matter, we have a similar request from the Weers Community Park Association. They typically have the concession for parking in the parking lot behind the Weers Community Center, Weers Fire Station. Same thing, over two thousand dollars again. And that's why it's before us. So, Counselor Hosmer would like to move to approve the request by the Weers Community Park Association to hold a parking fundraising event at the Weers Community Center and Weers Community Park parking lots in conjunction with the two thousand and nineteen Laconia Motorcycle Week event being held on June eighth, two thousand and nineteen, through June sixteen, two thousand and nineteen. Counselor Cheney seconds that motion, any discussion? Counselor Hamill?
Could we request a financial statement from them also?
Yeah, that would be a good idea, since we've requested it from the Weers Action Committee.
We can make that, I just know the revenue is significantly less.
Yeah, it's not anywhere near, but.
I think they're mostly volunteer and they only run it for a couple of days, but I'd be happy to ask them for something.
We could just show them a copy of what's being submitted by the Weers Action Committee, and they could provide us with similar documents, that would be good to have. Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries as well. And that is the end of new business. And then we have the one item of unfinished business, and that is the approval of Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four, which is on page forty-three. If I can find it. I don't know why I had it, because I saw it earlier, thank you, Counselor. Okay, this is the item we had the hearing on earlier tonight, dealing with making Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road emergency lanes. We have three motions to consider tonight to make this a reality. Taking them in order, we'll need to waive reading of the entire resolution. We will need to pass a second reading of the resolution by title only, and then a final reading in that order. Any questions before we get started on this?
Just offer one up, so in the resolution down on the last, now therefore, again, this is a limited scope of just winter maintenance only. I just want that to be entered into the record, that this is an emergency lane with a limited scope of winter maintenance, and that's reflected in the resolution. And that's what's agreed to by the, by the association members.
Okay, anyone else? All right, so the first motion would, in order, would be to waive a reading of Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four, waive reading in its entirety and to read by title only. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion, Counselor Cheney seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Next up, Counselor Hosmer also moves a second reading of Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four, a resolution designating Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes. Counselor Cheney seconds that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. And finally, Counselor Hosmer also moves to approve Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four, the designation of Pendleton Beach Road and Boathouse Road as emergency lanes under RSA two thirty-one colon fifty-nine dash A. Seconded by Counselor Cheney as well. Any discussion? Counselor Bowden?
I am going to reiterate.
They're that close.
Thank you.
You're keeping score, aren't you?
I am going to reiterate my concerns with respect to Boathouse Lane. When we were last here, we had a discussion about using the lake to draw water. We've subsequently found out that that's really not what they would be using, it as an emergency lane. The information that we got from the chief with respect to emergency use now resolves around Boathouse Road as good access points for us to launch their Zodiac towable boat to respond to all water ice rescues in the city. This is thin, in my opinion, with respect to Boathouse Lane. I'll go back and reiterate, the history doesn't support it. If you recall, last time we brought this subject up, I tried to split them up. I didn't do that this time, since I can read the writing on the wall. But this is a, we're going to be dealing with emergency lanes and as-is roads for a long time, for maybe longer than some of us will be sitting here to deal with this. And this is, in my opinion, a dangerous And this is, in my opinion, a dangerous precedent. So I can understand the sentiment for declaring Boathouse Lane an emergency lane. I don't think it really meets the criteria. So rather than go along with this, as I did last time, so we could get this moving to a public hearing, I'm just going to go on record as I'm going to oppose this for the reasons that I've stated before. Nothing against Pendleton Beach or Boathouse Road, or any of the fine people that live down there. I just don't think we should use the designation of emergency lanes in this situation. I think it's a slippery slope, and I'm done.
Any further discussion? Okay, so we're on, what's on the floor is a motion to approve Resolution 34 in final form. All those in favor, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have three votes yes, two votes no. The motion carries. Thank you. Council comments? Anyone tonight? Counselor Cheney, you've got nothing tonight?
No, sir, I don't.
All right.
Oh, come on!
All right, without objection, then, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at 8:31 PM. Thank you.